Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. I'm sorry.
That's right.
Okay, we're ready to begin? Terrific. Hello. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of South San Mateo County, I'd like to welcome the candidates and you, the audience, to this public forum for the Portola Valley Town Council. My name is Lisa Conrad, and I'm a League volunteer, and I'll be your moderator today. I'd like to take a moment to thank people who made this forum possible, Linda Olson and Lucia Tedesco, League volunteers. The League of Women Voters is a national political organization of women and men. We are nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose political candidates or political parties. We do work to influence public policy through advocacy and education. Our education mission is to encourage your active and informed participation in government at every level. Our interest is in helping voters gain fair and unbiased information in order to make an informed decision on Election Day, which is coming up November 5th. In addition to this forum, I encourage you to visit the League of Women Voters' election website, You can get information about all of the candidates and all of the measures on your ballot. So to begin, I'd like to ask everyone to please turn your cell phones off. This event is being recorded by Peninsula 360 Press, and you can view the video on our YouTube channel, which you can access from a link on our website, which is l w v s s m c dot org. That's League of Women Voters, South San Mateo County. This forum is also being recorded by Peninsula Press, a project of Stanford Journalism. So each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. We've gotten questions to us, and we will ask some of those, and we will also ask written questions taken from the audience. So we ask that you submit those using three-by-five cards available from our volunteers, Nancy Bobb in the back, Anne Trulie Zimorey, Lea Bannick, and Jeanette Kennedy. So you can just raise your hands, and they bring your card when you've finished writing. Hold the card up again, and then collect it and bring it up to our press. Cover as wide a range of issues as possible and to be sure the questions are not speeches and not redundant. We ask for questions that can be answered by all of the candidates. This way undecided voters can compare and contrast the candidates' various responses. So each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Jackie Sebrion, a League member, is sitting in the front. She'll be our timekeeper. She'll be timing each speaker, and will hold up signs at one minute, 30 seconds, and stop. I ask the candidates, please do not exceed your time limit. And I ask the audience to please hold your applause until the end of the forum. We have a lot to cover in a limited amount of time. So League volunteers Susannah Hill and Betsy Colby will be sorting the questions to avoid redundancy. And we have four candidates running for two seats on the Portola Valley Town Council. The candidates from my left, right, are Carter Ward, Rebecca Flynn, Helen Walter, and Helen Serna. We drew numbers for the candidates to determine their seating positions. Opening statements will go in this order, and closing statements will go in reverse order. Now rotate through the order for the questions. This is our standard League format, and we use it to keep things equitable. Please go ahead and write your questions. On the cards available, pass it to one of the League volunteers, and we'll get started with the candidates' opening statements. First speaker, Carter Ward. It should already be on, Carter.
Hello? Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Thank you for the opportunity, the League of Women Voters, for coordinating this. I'm Carter Ward. I'm a kid from northwest Oregon. I raised cattle and horses as a kid. I was in 4H. I did all the kind of normal stuff that, you know, 4H kids did. But there were certain things that made me who I am. I am a country boy. My mom would always say, "You can take the kid out of the country, but you can't take the..." Is it one minute already?
You have two minutes.
I have two minutes.
You have two minutes. That's a one-minute warning. You've got one minute to wrap up.
Have I already used one minute?
Yes.
How did I do that?
Sixty seconds. We'll give you an additional 30 seconds.
My top three priorities as a council member are retaining the rural character of Portola Valley, protecting open space, and valuing our town history. I want to make sure that we improve our financial situation by solving the current financial debacle that's going on. I want to make sure that we improve our customer service level and that we plan for housing the Portola Valley way in town.
I think it's on, the light's on.
I am honored to be before you as a candidate for Town Council. For nearly 25 years, my family and I have called this remarkable place home, drawn by its natural beauty and sense of community. Many of you know me as the founder of the PV Forum, which I've moderated for 20 years to keep our community connected and informed. I've served Portola Valley in many capacities, from school volunteering to the Parks and Rec and Sustainability Committees, and I currently serve on the Architectural and Site Control Commission. During the pandemic, I co-created the PV Cares to support our vulnerable residents. Today, we face significant challenges. Our town's continued viability and independence are at stake. We need to secure our financial stability and stop burning through our reserves. We need to meet the owner-estate housing mandates while preserving our town's character. And we need to rebuild our town administration and our culture. If elected, I pledge to address the structural deficit by meticulously scrutinizing our finances and supporting the progress being made by our new finance team. I will aggressively pursue and execute plans for new revenue streams needed to sustainably fund the increased cost of public safety, wildfire protection, and essential municipal services. To protect the town from losing our local land use control by creating diverse housing options that maintain PV's character and preserve our natural environment, I pledge to meet our state housing deadlines and prioritize the safety and well-being of current and future residents. And I pledge to foster a respectful, transparent, data-driven town culture to restore effective governance, new leadership, and town services. Thank you.
Thanks. Hello? I don't think this is working. Can I trade yours?
The green light is on. Maybe hand her the other one.
Testing, testing. Testing, testing. It's not working. Thanks to everyone who is interested in democracy and tuning in tonight. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting. My name is Helen Walter. I was raised here in town when my mom, Dr. Diana Coin, moved us here. I am raising my son here now because I love this town. Even with our differences, I strongly believe that together we can build a better Portola Valley. I'm running for office due to my experience of protecting open spaces. I am the only candidate who has increased and protected 10-plus acres in San Mateo County. I am running for office due to my understanding of fire resilience. I am the only candidate that was endorsed by the San Mateo County firefighters. Lastly, but most importantly, I'm running because I know how towns are run. I have that experience. I'm ready to help the town through this fiscal crisis because I have the experience of dealing with public budgets. I spent my day today working on a solar project and deciding between a 4% or a 7% escalation rate and what would save the taxpayers money. Prior to this... Thank you for your consideration. I would be honored by it.
Hi, I'm Helen from NASA. I've lived in town for 37 years, and my husband and I raised our two boys here. For 30 years, I ran my husband's auto repair business, the business in the public repair. And I definitely know how to run a business to be financially stable. Also, I was a Realtor in the area for 20 years, and I definitely know how to listen to my clients and get things done in a timely manner. While working, I also volunteered on the Trails Committee for many years because I love the trails and I had horses for 30 years here. Also, I volunteered on the schools for the nine-year on Kids with the Port of Ladera in Old Milldale. And I volunteered on the horse camps, two different horse camps for disabled children. I'm running on a platform of responsiveness and transparency that you may have heard about on my postcards, and making sure the state of our finances are restored and never again managed without oversight by the Finance Committee and the Town Council. I used to feel confident that the town was being capable of managing and governing. But about six years ago, I started coming to Town Council meetings. Well, I'm asking you to vote for me because I want to represent you. Thank you.
If you could please pass the word of life back this way. First question will be answered by Carter Ward. What is your most useful experience for serving on the Town Council?
My most useful experience? The years that I volunteered on the ASCC and the years that I spent in business. As a businessman, for the last 40 years, I've been able to balance budgets, maintain and create synergy, and work through the Building and Planning Department in ways that others don't understand in Portola Valley. And I've built housing in Portola Valley, more affordable housing than anyone else.
I believe that my most useful asset has been managing the PV Forum for the past 20 years. Through the PV Forum, I was involved in moderating people who posted on the PV Forum. I was the person who was the peacekeeper. I was the person who was promoting free speech. And it gave me front-row seats to seeing the diversity of views in our town, so that I'm also very familiar with all the issues through the PV Forum.
Thank you. My most useful experience is that I do deal with public agencies and budgets every day professionally, and I've done it for the past 20 years. I have budget experience. I know how public governance works. Yesterday, I convened 11 different agencies dealing with the toxic landslide on the bluffs of the Pacific Ocean. That's what I do daily, is protect... How to build resilience and create on budget. You know, the toxic landfill would take $50 million. We don't have that. What are we going to do? Thank you.
Hi. My pluses would be that I really know how to listen to people and to get things done. I know how to get responses. Too many times, I've seen people in town asking things at the Town Council and giving their concerns, and there's never an answer. My job is going to be to get those answers. So that's what I'm good at. I'm good at running a business, so I will definitely be keeping the finan... Sorry, I keep looking at these signs here. Keeping the financials in check. And I'm just good at working with people. Thank you.
And the next question, Rebecca Flynn. Another leadership. How would you lead the Town Council's decision-making process?
Well, I think everybody knows that I delve very deep into any issue that I'm confronted. I do enormous amount of research. I talk to a lot of different people on all different sides to make sure I fully understand the issues that are being played out. And then I work with... As I've worked in my committees, I work with everyone else on the committee to make sure that we can come to some type of reasonable agreement.
Thank you. I am very concerned about what's happened to our staffing levels in town. That we've had 80% voluntary employee turnover is staggering. If we want services and we want our safety, we need to hire, we need to recruit, hire and retain the best staff possible. And that's critical. That our current town manager was just let go when we're about to have a fiscal emergency, declared fiscal emergency, is troubling to me. Thank you.
Excuse me. I would run in a Town Council meeting. I would hopefully maybe change a few things, maybe have more meetings than are had now every other week. But maybe one meeting for a discussion meeting with residents and the Town Council. And then the next meeting will be more for the Town Council to discuss what it is they're making a decision on. That way, I think there's more information given, and more residents get to have their input at their first discussion meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Just got to pass the deck up to Carter.
To lead the decision-making process, it starts with listening with empathy, you know, to understand people's points of view in a very sincere way. And then, you know, with the disparate issues and the disparate people, to create consensus around the important issues and, you know, to then communicate that resolution, you know, in a very direct and very clear way to the public.
Thank you. I need to ask people to please turn off their Wi-Fi. It's interfering with the recording that we're doing. So if people could please not use the Wi-Fi, the community Wi-Fi. Thank you. Helen Walter will start the next question. This is on town finance. The Financial Committee is sounding alarms. What ideas do you have for balancing the town budget?
So our budget is in dire straits at the moment. We have, you know, the sheriff's department costs have skyrocketed. The legal costs have skyrocketed. Our Housing Element, because they've spent two years increasing costs... Like, our planning department walked out, pretty much. And we have one planner left on staff, so we've paid extra. So I would absolutely try to, again, hire and recruit strong staff so that... to cut down on those costs of consultants. Thank you.
Hi. My ideas would be to possibly look into becoming a charter city. From what I understand, it costs about $125,000 to be a charter city. And you don't have to do the full charter plan. We could just say that our charter is going to include a property transfer tax, which would add to our coffers immensely. Actually, there also could be impact fees on development, park and rec, waters and sewer. I'm not big on the partial tax myself, but I think we can get around that. Also, we need to review our consultants' contracts to see what we're paying for and what we can not pay for anymore. Thank you.
In general, I'm a fiscal conservative. I've always felt that towns should live within their means. You know, it's astonishing, you know, that, you know, the current situation puts us, you know, substantially, you know, into our reserves, leaving us potentially, you know, being without reserves, you know, within months or years from now. I want to start with cost-cutting, and I agree with some of my fellow members here, you know, to recruit and retain professional staff to eliminate, you know, the cost of many of many of the consultants, you know, that are exacerbating our financial ruin.
We are in a fiscal crisis. We have maybe six months to deal with this. We need to move forward as soon as possible to declare a fiscal emergency. And then we need to make a decision on how we're going to raise the funds to cover our deficit. And we have a choice of moving forward with a real property transfer tax, which would require us to also become a charter city light or to have a partial tax. I tend to prefer the idea of the real property transfer tax because it would have less impact on everybody from day to day. The other thing we absolutely have to do is go through our finances with a fine-tooth comb and figure out what is costing us extra and where we're not picking up our revenues.
Thank you. Next question will begin with Ellen Vernaza. Housing Element. What do you think is the best next step for our Housing Element process?
Well, first off, getting the Housing Element back from the state would be step number one. And then we can address what we've actually gotten ourselves into here. I think, first off, the Town Council should have challenged the 253-unit arena number that was given to us without any regard to our high-fire area, sitting on multiple earthquake faults or our two roads of evacuation for the over 4,000 people in town, much less Los Trancos and the people that are in our county areas. But first, we have to get the Housing Element back. Otherwise, we can't do anything.
The Housing Element. What is the best next step? Best next step, you know, is to truly look at the Housing Element, you know, from a creative standpoint. We have a responsibility, you know, to plan for, you know, housing. We need to do it in a way that is based in Portola Valley, you know, rather than based in Emeryville, you know, with urban or suburban models. We need to create a vision, you know, of what this housing can be. And I think we should consider, you know, housing that is incorporated into mixed-use developments, you know, as the primary mover.
So we have a Housing Element. We're still waiting to be recertified, but that Housing Element already has a large number of programs that we can move forward on right now. These include the Amnesty Program. We've committed to starting to creating that by March, I believe, of 2025. We can start doing that immediately. That would bring us quite a few units towards our arena. We need to look into helping people who have guest houses to do ADU conversions. We need to certify and pre-approve ADU plans so it's easier for residents to start with ADUs. And we need to finally move forward with evaluating the identified areas where housing could be placed and start designing.
Prior to the last... Two years ago, we did almost... We almost had a Housing Element. I was part of the Housing Element Committee, Ad-Hoc Committee. And they've ripped it apart the past two years and spent over a million of our dollars, of the taxpayer dollars. So, you know, we definitely can innovate and meet the moment. And instead of fighting the law, when the law... You know, if when you fight the law and the law wins, we can't do that. We're about to go bankrupt and turn off our lights, right? I strongly believe that we can meet the moment and figure out where we can encourage the housing units that we need by things like taking our FAR and not counting it towards the floor area ratio and not counting it towards your overall to... But within... I'm not saying this very well. Within means, within smart regulation. Thank you.
We're back to Carter Ward for this question. Another housing. What do you think about housing at Stanford Wedge, Dorothy Ford, or any other thoughts?
Those are big topics for one minute. I support housing on the wedge. I believe that the wedge, you know, with some manipulation in the design to increase separations to reduce the density, you know, is appropriate. I don't support housing at Dorothy Ford Park. I think it was, you know, purchased, you know, with open space in mind and needs to continue to be open space. I do think there are opportunities all over town, you know, for, you know, density increases that weren't considered in the Housing Element at this time, including, you know, integration into mixed-use projects.
So since I'm on the ASCC and the Stanford Wedge is coming up before us in the next two weeks, I don't feel comfortable making a public announcement about it. I do, however, do... For Ford Open Space, I do not support having a large complex there. And I agree with Carter that I think there are a lot of other areas where we can incorporate smaller amounts of... Smaller developments that fit better into the character of Portola Valley, as well as support our residents with making ADUs and smaller houses easier to build.
In terms of the wedge, I absolutely support and welcome our new Stanford neighbors that will be coming. And the affordable housing units probably will go to staff people from Stanford. I absolutely support that and welcome them. Stanford could have built higher density, and they didn't. And they've worked with the city... Town, excuse me. I am on the record. I voted against Ford Field when it was before the Housing Element Committee. I am on the record for that. I think that we could have done something. We have an acre next to the school. The school needs housing for teachers, that we could do some sort of trade, and they put in some acreage as well. So I strongly believe that there are other areas that we could build housing. Thank you.
I, on the other hand, are against all high-density housing. I think it's very unsafe in a high-fire area where we have no evacuation for the people that we already have. If we add another 600 people in town, that's... could be 600 cars trying to get out of town during an evacuation. Also, the amount of... Sorry, watching the signs here still. The amount of fuel that it takes to build high-density housing and including the wood, the ceilings, the... Just even the people's furniture, cars. It is such a high-fire danger to put that much high-density in one place, in my opinion. Thank you.
This one will start with Rebecca Flynn. Would you favor annexing the Ladera neighborhood into Portola Valley? Why or why not?
I think it's definitely an option that we need to explore. I did talk to a few people in Ladera, and they felt that... These are just a couple people. They felt that the character of Ladera was very different than the character of Portola Valley and that it might not be a mesh. The benefits to Portola Valley, however, would be their commercial district because all of a sudden, we'd be able to have retail taxes that would come into our coffers. I'm not 100% sure of what Ladera's benefits would be, but certainly they wouldn't have to drive to Redwood City to get their permits done.
I absolutely don't support annexing Ladera. Respectfully, Rebecca.
I'm just exploring.
I know. The process to go through an annexation is tremendously expensive and staff-intensive. But all parties have to want to be included. I just don't think it's realistic. I think our house is, unfortunately, our house is figuratively burning down, and we need to figure out what we are going to do to take care of our house today. Thank you.
I also don't agree about annexing Ladera. I think we're two different lifestyles. We're living in the country here. Ladera isn't quite in... Living our lifestyle. And I don't mean that as in money lifestyle. I'm talking about living in the country, urban compared to living in a WU area. So I just can't see the two meshing and working well together. Thanks.
Annexation. You know, it's an interesting topic. It's a topic that, you know, our forefathers talked about a lot, you know, in the, you know, early '60s, you know, trying to decide, you know, what to do and what not to do. In general, I've respected them, you know, a lot for what they did and the courage that they had, you know, associated with, you know, developing, you know, the town to where it was and essentially setting us up, you know, to not end up with very much growth. So right now, I tend to defer. At the same time, I would be open, you know, to investigations and discussions to see, you know, what it might be worth.
Thank you. Helen Walter will start this question. Alpine Road is an essential artery. What ideas do you have to ensure it is usable during an emergency evacuation?
So Alpine Road has a great bike lane along the edge. And if we could do a protected bike lane that would be an extra evacuation route in and out of Alpine... I actually live on Alpine Road, so I travel it daily. Also, if we were to put in a roundabout or two, however, a few years ago at Ladera, those... Then we would not be running into our neighbors in Ladera. Those... Each of those roundabouts is about 2.5 million, though. So there is a study that has looked at it. But, you know, no one's come up with the money at this point for any of those ideas. Thank you.
Yes, I agree with Helen as far as the bike lane and using that for an extra evacuation route. But I think roundabouts are very unsafe, in my opinion. I've... Redwood City has installed a number of roundabouts. And you can't even fit cars around them, Redwood City has installed a number of roundabouts, and you can't even fit cars around them, much less have a big enough roundabout like they do in Europe to get horse trailers and people's trucks. There's, I just don't think they work well at all, safety-wise. Thanks.
Alpine Road and Portola Roads are both, you know, potentially closed with one power pole or one tree at each end, you know, creating, you know, a real evacuation route, you know, would mean, you know, changing trees, changing poles, undergrounding utilities. I think we need to deal with this, really, from a density standpoint and, you know, control it from that point, you know, rather than exacerbating it until we find another way.
I think one of the first things we need to do today is start making sure that we've cleared the brush from Alpine Road as well as Portola Road so that there's less danger of having burning branches fall onto that road and limit, further limit evacuation. In the event of a severe evacuation, we would need to turn both lanes into the same direction. And we will definitely need our emergency services as well as extra volunteers to help coordinate moving traffic and help coordinate allowing people to make left-turn lane, left-turn, left turns onto Alpine or, or other, or from other streets, so.
So Helen will start this question. Do you support changing town government away from the town manager model? If so, what approach would you take?
Okay, in my opinion, if we're going to have a town manager, we have to better define the town manager's job and responsibilities. They need to, we need to, before hiring somebody, we need to recognize their ability to run a town like Portola Valley, not just come from a city and run us as if we were a city. We need to work in our committee forum where the committees report to the town council. And the town manager has to be more responsible to the town council. Thank you.
All the way to Carter.
I would support improving the relationship between the town staff and the council, principally by having the department directors report, you know, to the town manager and the council at the same time. I think the hierarchy where the directors are reporting to the town manager and the town manager is somehow, you know, gleaming out, you know, the important stuff to tell the council, you know, is part of what, you know, has, you know, created an opportunity, you know, for the public to feel that there isn't transparency. You know, if those directors would be reporting, you know, directly, you know, we'd have transparency from, you know, those departments, you know, open to the public. Sorry for taking too much time.
I think we have to be kind of careful about what those two terms refer to and what the responsibilities are. In the past, a town administrator has been treated more like a glorified secretary to the point at which in the, in the far past, even though the woman was doing most of the work to run the town, she wasn't even able to go to town manager conferences. I think instead, the model needs to be, to rethink how town council members can speak to the department heads and the staff and not have it to be so blocked by a town manager. So it's clear that we, it's important that we define that the town manager is open to that type of relationship.
You know, Jeremy Dennis left this town making around 215,000. He's now at Brisbane making 300,000. If we are really going to be able to hire someone, you would need to give them that title. And they would need to have that management ability to work with their department heads. Now, the department heads need to be able to present their, you know, their staff reports to the town council, but you need that town manager to steer the ship, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, we're back to Carter to start this one off, going a little bit more lighthearted now. What is one of your favorite community events in Portola Valley and why?
One of my favorite community events is, you know, is the PB Palooza. You know, I think it is the one thing that brings all of us together over something that we all love, you know, brings us to the outdoors. It brings people, you know, together in a way that moves away from, you know, all of the politics, you know, and makes us believe, you know, and remember why, you know, we're here, you know, and it is about enjoying the open space.
I would definitely give a second vote to the PB Palooza, but since we already have one, I want to talk about one of the things that I had a great time at was the drought fair. I thought that was a great event. The Sustainability Committee did a fantastic job. This was actually before my time, before I joined the Sustainability Committee, and I got roped into joining it there. But, you know, they had a great job in terms of showing how you can save water, both in your irrigation and your showers. They had demos. There was a lot of excitement for people at the time because we were in a severe drought, so.
So another vote for PB Palooza. Great, great event. Love that community event. I also love our sunrises and sunsets, right? To be able, that we all get to participate and watch what the natural wonders that we all cherish around here. I know it's not really that we're all together doing it, but the town as a whole often enjoys them together. So I love our sunsets and sunrises. Thank you.
Okay, I kind of enjoy zotsitats. I was one of the traffic stoppers on the streets this year, and having to advise people that they can't come out on the streets, they weren't too happy. But it was fun watching every, all the little kids going by on little tiny bikes. I mean, they went in far distances and older people running. It was just an amazing group of people that just kept coming and coming and coming. And I was amazed, in all honesty, how many people actually ran the zotsitats, but it was great cheering them on.
Thank you. Yes, Rebecca, she's on top of it. What is your opinion about an opt-in program in the housing element?
I think it's, the opt-in program was based on the fact that when we did a survey of the whole community, the biggest request was to have housing spread around the entire town instead of having it concentrated in one or two big locations. So in that respect, I think it's one of the best ways to do that. I think there's quite a few properties that are very flat, that are in safe areas, that could accommodate a slightly larger density. We're talking four to six homes. Already, we have properties that have four homes with all their ADUs and SB9 units, so it's not that big of a stretch.
I absolutely support the opt-in program. It does, it is one of the innovative ways to spread our density throughout the town. You know, the volume of a house of, you know, for instance, the 11 units next door to Roberts right now is not an opt-in, but it's 11 units and it's using a floor area ratio of about a 10,000 square foot house, right? So you've got 10 units instead of one house. So I absolutely support the four to six units on a parcel. I think it's a great way to further fair housing and spread density throughout town. Thank you.
Okay, I believe the housing element called for, to have the housing spread around town, like they said, but where it came to the amount of being unlimited lots that would be allowed to do this, I think it was done in such a quick moment that we've really had no discussion on the matter. I think that was a poor decision to do, to allow it to be unlimited lots in Portola Valley. But I do understand that point of spreading it around town rather than having just big, high-density areas in one area. Thanks.
Carter.
I supported the opt-in program when it was first discussed, you know, as being four to six units, you know, over, you know, the eight-year period. I saw it as a great opportunity to test some ideas. The way it's constructed right now, you know, essentially being unlimited, is one that I don't. I think it significantly changes the character of the town. It'll change the density in ways that I don't think you want. And I think that it would need to have, you know, some very, very specifics, you know, in order to make it work, you know, in the different zoning districts in the town.
The next question will be, start with Helen Walter. Portola Valley has to solve a number of tough problems. How should town council lead the process of making the best decisions?
So obviously, town council is made up of five people on the body, and their authority is based on, you know, the majority vote, so three votes. The town council is going to have a very fast, without, without much deliberation, going to have to decide how to raise revenues very quickly. And they are going to have to explain it as clearly as possible, as quickly as possible. And I appreciate everyone here tonight seeing those, the options that are available to you tonight so that when you cast your vote, thank you.
Okay, I believe the town council needs to listen to the committees, and the committees need to listen to the residents. I believe the town council needs to respond to residences' concerns and questions, but they have to listen to the people coming up the line in order to make any decisions. Thanks.
I feel the town council in the current construct doesn't get an opportunity to discuss amongst themselves, you know, the input that they've, you know, collected, you know, from the town and its committees and the, and the public. I would recommend, you know, that the council meet, you know, every week and every other meeting be a working session, you know, so that the public would have an opportunity to hear the council discussing the issues, to understand the strife, understand, you know, the difficulties, so that the public could end up, you know, and the committees could end up being, you know, participants, you know, in the process by helping them, helping the council create consensus. Because I do believe that, you know, that the goal of the council is to end up with consensus, you know, in a, for every vote.
I think it's very important that we take advantage of the expertise that's found in our committees and get their input for every, for the decisions we have to make. I'd also recommend having some town forums for residents to answer questions, to let people know about the extent of our crisis. I would also get feedback from other towns and resources. I've actually already myself called up a city council member at St. Helena to understand about their new charter ballot measure and their real property transfer tax to get a better idea of what we need to do to accomplish that.
Thank you. Helen will start this round. Would you approve construction of dedicated pickleball courts? And where would be a good location?
Okay, I played pickleball for 10 years at least and then hurt my back and couldn't do it anymore. But yes, I do think that we could have some dedicated pickleball courts. I do believe that they have to be away from housing, because if you've played pickleball, you know the click, 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 click. So it wouldn't be fair if it was close to people's residences. But yes, I do believe that, say, the town center or maybe something around Ford Field, we could be adding more dedicated pickleball courts.
I don't know. I'm not a pickleball player. I'd support the community and, you know, with the recommendations, you know, of the Parks and Rec Committee and the Open Space Committee, you know, to help the council decide. It isn't one that I, you know, know whether it's a yes or a no for me right now. And I'll, I'll use that 30 seconds on some other question.
In general, I would defer also to the Parks and Rec to see if there's an enormous demand. It seems to be extremely popular sport, more so than I see in tennis. So in general, you know, I guess if it was feasible, but I do have to remind everyone we are in a budget crisis. So this is definitely not a priority, and it won't be for several years. So, you know, start raising money if you want one. I have no idea where we might be able to put it, possibly maybe next to Ford Baseball Field might be a good spot.
Oh my gosh, this is such deja vu. When I was on the Parks and Rec Committee for the city of Mountain View, they, we had people coming and saying, can we have pickleball courts? You know, 20 years ago, and at that point, none of us on the committee had ever heard a pickleball, right? So we're, so I don't know either. I would need to defer. I don't know the zoning on some of our open spaces, if it's feasible or not. And just like Rebecca, we need to focus on keeping the lights on and making sure that we're all safe and sound right now. And a pickleball court would have to be a lower priority right now, unfortunately, because it looks really fun. I'd love to learn.
Thank you. We're back to Carter. This is conflicts of interest, a problem that needs to be addressed. How and why would you address problems with conflicts of interest?
Well, I'm the subject of some conflicts of interest, you know, as a consequence of my, you know, architecture and construction management practice, you know, being here in Portola Valley. So I've dealt with conflicts of interest, you know, for the last, you know, more than 34 years, you know, 22 of which were on the ASCC. With conflicts of interest, you know, if I have a financial interest in a project that I'm designing, I do step down. I have my staff, you know, replace me, you know, as, you know, as the presenter for the project. It is something that, at the council level, I think there are less conflicts of interest than I actually have right now, you know, with the ASCC, you know, since most of our projects, all of our projects are subject to ASCC review, and almost none of them ever rise to the level of council review.
I think it's really important that we enforce any conflict of interest rules and regulations that we have in town, people, that people be reminded when they have a conflict of interest and asked, and asked to be recused. All town council members, all commission members need to be provided with the area for which they are, they have a conflict of interest. I, I'm on the ASCC, and I've actually never been provided that 300-foot, I believe it is, of houses that I'm not allowed to pass judgment on, and that's something that absolutely we need to make sure every commission member has that information.
I absolutely support being transparent and clear about conflict of interest. Before I ran for office here, I needed to work with my city manager in the city of Half Moon Bay where I work to make sure there were not conflicts. And we sorted it out. We do share, Portola Valley and city of Half Moon Bay shares the same town attorney, city attorney, Catherine. I work with her weekly and often, so I have to be very cautious around her. But we worked it out, we checked the law. I am allowed to be running. I am very conscientious about potential conflicts and need to be thoughtful about that. Thank you.
I think we do address the conflict of interest already. From what I've seen in many meetings, town council meetings, that the people who do have a conflict of interest step out, or in a planning commission, they step out while that project is being discussed. So I think it's actually being handled already. Thanks.
Thank you, Rebecca Flynn. What are your ideas for how to work with Mid Peninsula Open Space on their plan to build in Hawthorne?
Well, I think we're already moving forward with working with them. A number of Portola Valley residents have been placed on the committee to evaluate how that, that huge beautiful property gets developed. They are having, they've invited much of the public to come to their meetings. I've had the opportunity to walk that site. It's absolutely spectacular, and it needs to be protected, and it also needs to be made more available so that people can, can enjoy it as well. We just need to continue to interact with them, continue to be on their committees and continue to show up at their meetings.
So Hawthorne is an amazing site. We are, Mid Peninsula is lucky to have that site. And they are, you know, they worked, Mid Peninsula's worked very hard on acquisition, and now they've worked very hard to increase public access. So that's going to impact the town of Portola Valley, and, you know, it's going to be more crowded on the weekends, right? So we need to make sure that they have an MOU, for instance, parking with Cordera, for instance, on the weekends so that we don't have overflow parking on Alpine Road or some such. Thank you.
I think the biggest thing that's going to affect us is the safety of the traffic and the bicyclists driving down Alpine Road, cars driving down Alpine Road, the speed of the cars as they're getting down Alpine Road. So I really think that the town has to take into consideration where the entrance is going to be and make sure it's at the safest place possible so people are not getting in accidents and hitting bicyclists as they're going in and out of the Hawthorns. Thanks.
And Carter. And Carter.
I like the relationship, you know, that the town has, you know, with MRSD. I wish the relationship were closer, so that we would really be developing the usage plans, you know, inside of, you know, a conditional use permit process, so that we could vet, you know, the CEQA, you know, related issues as they're coming up, you know, rather than getting them pushed aside, you know, as it feels like right now. I would insist on, you know, having an overall usage plan, because I think that there are other committees and other issues that need to be dealt with, you know, besides, you know, traffic, but also emergency preparedness, you know, and wildland fire management.
Thank you. Helen Walter. What are your ideas for improving fire safety in town?
Yep, so I'm the only candidate in the race that was endorsed by the firefighters, San Mateo County firefighters. And I was endorsed because of, I am concerned that we are not looking at the town on a landscape scale. For instance, the Portola Valley Ranch is a firewise community, as is the Sequoias, but the area in between, in Willowbrook, is not. So if, you know, whether you live, wherever you live, we are all concerned by fire, and the firefighters have endorsed me because they understand that I would work on increasing firewise communities, for example. Thank you.
I also agree that we should aim towards being a firewise town. It will possibly help our insurance if we can be considered a firewise town, and it's really going to be the only thing that saves us from fire. My sister's house burnt down in the Santa Rosa Tubbs Fire, and she lived in a area just like Portola Valley with rolling hills and oaks. So when you drive through that area after a fire and you see only chimneys sticking up out of the ground, I think it really will knock your socks off and make you much more aware of, we really need fire safety in town.
I support the Woodside Fire Protection District's, you know, new ordinance, you know, for fire protection. I'm encouraged by, you know, their current inspection process and the encouragement and coaching that they're providing, you know, to homeowners and property owners, you know, on how to improve the fire safety on their properties. I'm further encouraged, you know, by, you know, the construction techniques that people are implementing now, you know, to protect against, you know, ember intrusion in homes, and would want to continue that. One issue that I have, you know, in Portola Valley, you know, is, you know, the incomplete, you know, process associated... The incomplete process of fire protection at the Woodside Fire Protection District.
Testing. Testing. Can we switch the batteries?
Hello, hello, hello?
Thank you, thank you, Carter.
We need to continue to work very closely with Woodside Fire Protection District. We also need to look at the entire town as an entire group, if you will. And I would recommend almost that we follow Zeke Lunder's advice, which is to follow the direction of typical fire. Ravines are thinned, that we work with Stanford Jasper Ridge to make sure that there controlled burns are happening, because that's one of the biggest directions where fire, wildfire will come into our town, and it will whip up the ravines off of Escobar, for example. So we need to continue to do that, as well as coordinate brush clearance and defensible space across the town.
Thank you. And Ellen, what would you consider to be the characteristics of a well-functioning team?
What kind of team, what are we talking about?
I think that town council.
Oh, town council? Okay. Who knows what we're talking about these days? Anyway, a well-functioning team, they have to listen to each other and take into consideration the other side of the story. And I think that's really it. They can't be fighting each other all the time. They just have to listen and just consider the other side's outlook on things. Thanks.
Listen, 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 and listen some more. The only way teams work together is when, you know, all of the parties actually understand how the other people are feeling, you know, what their motivations are, you know, they have to have empathy, you know, for, you know, the disparate positions. They need to work, you know, in a coordinated method, you know, to prioritize what are the important things, ignore the things that are unimportant, and work through those things, you know, that will make the difference. A well-functioning team works together.
A team definitely listens to each other and shows respect. They find common ground between each other, even if they disagree on things. They build trust between members. They hold periods of what I would call brainstorming, to throw out crazy ideas before they start evaluating them. And they show, they show respect. That's the biggest one.
Characteristics of a well-functioning team are many of what my fellow candidates have discussed. Being respectful, right? Listening, finding solutions. And even if you disagree with each other, being respectful and understanding that different people will bring different experiences to the table and their votes. And not everyone will agree, and you still need to be, you know, know that you're going to need to work together to find solutions.
Thank you. Back to Carter for, I think, the last question, and I'm going to pull my moderator power. And I'm going to ask a question that I was very impressed with at a Redwood City Forum. I thought it was very telling about the candidates. And if we could go to one and a half minutes for this answer. Talk about one time in your life when you had an opinion on something and someone changed that opinion, or something. So you thought you believed in one way, and that you actually, someone or something was able to change your mind on that. Got a minute and a half.
It's a very good question. As a member of the ASCC, you know, this has actually happened often, you know, where as I've visited sites and I've looked, you know, at the context, looked at the drawings, I came to the meeting, you know, with, you know, some level of opinion. And a good friend of mine, you know, and fellow ASCC member, Bud Eisberg, you know, was a great analyzer, you know, of empathy, you know, and, you know, the current conditions. And he often, you know, would come, you know, come to the meeting to explain the whys, you know, or the why-nots. And, you know, I listened carefully, you know, to why he felt the way he did, and he oftentimes would change my mind.
I guess one time was when we brought up the idea of putting housing on the town remnant, which is near the Frog Pond, near Corder Madera School. And it seemed to me that it was a reasonable spot to put a few homes. And I had Dana Breen, actually, I can credit her, I think she's here today, for sending me a note about all the reasons why it wasn't such a good idea to put housing there, and how important the habitat was to tie into the Frog Pond, and to make sure that the wildlife that was in that entire area continued to be a whole system. So that made me rethink that.
I'm dealing at work right now with a solar project. I kind of mentioned that earlier. And when we brought it to, when it was between Peninsula Clean Energy and this other company. And I love Peninsula Clean Energy, for, you know, we all see them on our electrical bills every month. And this, but this other company really convinced me that we needed to use them because, because it was turnkey, they were going to help me get all the grants and the credits and the incentives to finish this. Well, they somewhat were predatory. And now I am gone, taking the city back, probably, to go work with Peninsula Clean Energy. So when I was able to see new numbers, I changed my mind yet again, and we're working now with Peninsula Clean Energy. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take this in a different direction. I've been married for 50 years. So, I got married early. But you have to learn how to listen to your partner. I mean, generally, you're sure of everything when you're starting off, you know? And if you, I've definitely changed my mind on a number of things with listening to my husband and just having to listen to two different viewpoints and coming up with the one that I now agree with more. Thanks.
Thank you. That's all of our time for questions, and so now we'll listen to the candidates' closing statements, and we'll go in reverse order, so Ellen will begin, and they'll each have two minutes. Ellen?
All right. Well, again, I'm running on responsiveness and transparency. So I really would like you to vote for me, so I can represent you. I want to listen to you. I want to get things done, and if I don't know the answer to something, I will research it and I will get back to you. So that's pretty much what I'm running on, and I, anything else that I have to learn, I will learn, and that's pretty much it. Thanks.
So we've heard different versions tonight of what we can offer to each, you know, as town council members. But first, I wanted to close, actually, with a short story about why I love this town, and Rebecca's heard this story. But my son was, needed to ride the bus from Ormondale over to Corder Madera, and he was in third grade, he was very little. So I was riding the bus initially the first few times. And, but I was on my phone, I'm a working mom, I was on my phone responding to work emails, and he pulls over at Ron Ramy's at the gas station, this is Sam Trans, pulls over, and the bus doesn't go anywhere, and doesn't go anywhere, and it got really quiet, and I look up, and all of the kids on the bus have gotten off. And they've all got, it's Friday afternoon, and they've all gotten off and gotten their ice cream and gotten back on the Sam Trans bus. And that's what I want to keep in this town, where everyone is safe, the kids can run around, and it's a wonderful place to be on the trails. I want to make sure that our lights stay on, when, you know, that our town is a functioning town, that the counter is open 40 hours a week, not 14. So thank you for your consideration.
So I want to share a reason why I'm also so passionate about preserving the Portola Valley. Recently, we set up a camera in our backyard and have been watching a baby fox grow up. Every day, he ambles along paths and chases birds, climbs our mulberry tree to gorge on the fruit, and explores the land with curiosity. And this experience reminded me of when my own children were little, discovering our backyard with the same curiosity and joy as that little fox. It's a perfect example of the unique balance between nature and community that makes Portola Valley so special and worth preserving. Our town founders established this community 60 years ago on the principles of environmental stewardship, efficient governance, and strong community spirit. Today, we must honor that legacy while adapting to change. I'm committed to serving all residents. With advanced degrees in immunology and business, plus experience in biotech and digital marketing, I bring a problem-solving mindset to the council. I'm the type of person who sees the need and implements solutions quickly. And I firmly believe that we have the tools and options to overcome our challenges if we all join forces and move forward as one community. Thank you.
I'm the candidate for y'all. I'm the guy that, you know, is the same guy every day. I decide, you know, what is good and bad the same way every day. I've got the experience of, you know, 40 years in business, you know, dealing with people, dealing with families, dealing with institutions, fire stations, schools, you know, horse facilities. I deal with you all. I see you at the grocery store, I'm the same guy, you know, that you can trust. I've got the experience, I've got the commitment, you know, the principles to make, you know, good decisions, and I'm willing to do the hard work. I stand for you all. I stand for your kids. I stand for your grandkids. I want this place to be as perfect and as wonderful, you know, as it can be, you know, so that they will always want to come home to grandpa and grandma.
Thank you. I'd like to wrap up with a nice comment from one of you. A huge thank you to all who are running and offering to serve our town. It is a big commitment and so impressive to see so many talented people running. And I'd like to add the League's thanks to the candidates and all of the volunteers and their participation, and I'd especially like to thank you, the audience, for being here, taking time to better inform yourselves before voting. And I'd like to remind you to be sure to look up additional information about the candidates, other races, and both state and local measures, as well as a video replay of this forum to be posted soon on the League's election website, vote411.org. Thank you so much for being here tonight, all of you.